Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the twenty-eighth meeting of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland. The time is now six P M., and I now call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Mills?
Here.
Councilwoman Cole? Councilwoman Johnson?
Here.
Councilman Simmons?
Here.
President Clark?
Here.
Mayor Sidnor?
Here.
You have a call, Madam President.
Thank you. Moving to agenda item number three, approval of the minutes from our February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting and our March fifth, twenty-twenty-five work session. Hopefully, everyone has had the opportunity to read, review the recent minutes. Are there any suggestions, edits? I do see Councilmember Simmons, please proceed.
Yes, Madam President, I just wanted to propose an addition to the February twenty-fourth minutes. Right at the end, the section that talks about the resolution three dash two, three dash twenty-twenty-five, that was the one about the muni bonds. We just needed to record in there that we did take a vote and it did pass, so my recollection is that I originated the motion, Councilwoman Johnson seconded, and it passed unanimously by council with concurrence of the mayor, so I move that we amend the February twenty-twenty-four minutes to reflect that.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons, are there any additional recommendations or suggested edits? With the recommended adjustments, I will now entertain a motion to approve both minutes mentioned.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, I have a motion and a second, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Simmons?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving to agenda item number four, report of the mayor and city council. This evening, we will start with Councilmember Jeffrey Mills.
Good evening, everyone. I have to I'm actually have to pass for right now, Madam President.
Okay. No problem, Councilmember Mills. Moving to Councilmember Christine Johnson.
Good evening, everyone. For my report tonight, I'd just like to share that on February the twenty-sixth, I had the privilege and the honor of reading to the first and fifth graders at the Laurel Elementary School for their Black History Month Read-In program, which was very fun and exciting. That same evening, I attended the virtual awards ceremony where Michelle Blair and the Town Center of Laurel received a Waste, Diversion, and Recycling Award from the Department of Environment and Keep Prince George's County Beautiful. So I just wanted to congratulate them and personally let Michelle Blair know that I understand it's a huge undertaking doing that project or keeping up with that project. Still, she keeps Laurel at the forefront of the compost efforts, and it's good to see her being recognized in the county for all her efforts, so congratulations to her. On February the twenty-seventh, I had the pleasure of attending the movie premiere of No Address hosted by Lars, followed by a talkback session, so it was great to see so many people supporting the event and hearing from the team, the movie was about unhoused population, and the one thing I could appreciate about the movie is that it showed that homelessness can happen from anywhere, like you can have a job, you can have a home, and things change. So I appreciate them bringing forth that message, and hopefully people get a chance to see that and understand the importance of helping the unhoused population and hopefully get a fire up under us to help as much as we can. On March the seventh, I also had the opportunity to read again to two kindergarten classes at Scottstown Elementary School, which was so fun, they were so energetic and participated, so I handed them out some stickers, it was a great time. And that night, I stopped by the Women and Vision Ladies Meetup at the Mansion held by Parks and Recreation to kick off Women's History Month, which was a nice intimate event. They were doing their vision boards and had some cocktails for the adults, it was great to stop by there. Like I said, to kick off Women's History Month, and then the next day, you know, having the annual, second annual Women's History Program, so it was just a great start to the month to highlight Women's History. And for that event, you know, spotlighting mentorship, education, and leadership, so hopefully the community had a chance to get some valuable information and again spur the fire up under us to, you know, work on that mentorship together as a community. Just to share some upcoming events, think on March the thirteenth, at the Mount Pilgrim Elementary School Black History Month production will be at six P M., held at the Laurel High School Auditorium. And then on March fourteenth, the Laurel Board of Trade has a new location, so they'll have their ribbon cutting and open house at four P M. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson, next we have Councilmember Adrian Simmons.
Thank you, Madam President, a couple of things to share, this past week I had a a member of the community reach out to just share about the senior book club that she helps to run and asked me to just add it to a sort of a list I'm keeping of different community groups that are going on around town, so basically, it's a senior book club, they meet at the Laurel Armory on four-twenty-two Montgomery Street on the second Friday of each month at two P M. And certainly, if you're interested in joining in with that, please check that out. And I'm also, again, keeping a list on my site at AdrianforLaurel.org. If other groups would like to be added in there, please let me know. I did want to also just give a little shout out recognition to one of our city team members as well. A resident reached out to me last week that he had come in for some passport renewal, and he needed some help with some of the forms, and our front desk individual Leslie really helped step him through, so much so that he like had to call me to tell me how thankful he was for her help. And I thought that was just a great testament to sort of the helping folks that we have on our team, so thank you to her. And he wanted me to let you know, thank you as well. One thing, a little update, a little bit, folks may be familiar that we had Ms. Linda and Eric from Eric's Ideal come out, sort of visit council earlier this year. This past week, the law actually did pass, both houses, the House and the Senate, and they got to cross file and approve it and go to the governor. Basically, all signals are that that legislation will be passed and sort of a little bit of story for Laurel to be a part of that and to help support seeing that through. On the other side, I did want to alert some of the small businesses of Laurel to a piece of legislation at the state level that was introduced last week that I just sort of got wind of today, which is introducing a two-point-five percent sales tax on service providers. So that could be marketing, financial planning, labor services, accounting services, I T services, and things like that, and it's actually scheduled for hearing this Wednesday. Unfortunately, the official testimony window closed at six P M. when we started this meeting, but you can still send an email to members of the committee, I'll put their information up on my site, again, AdrianforLaurel.org, but really would have a notable impact on small businesses. And I just wanted to get that word out there for all the small businesses in Laurel to, if you're not in favor of it, to reach out to those committees and our representatives. Actually, one of our representatives for District Twenty-One, Senator Rosa Pepp, is on the Senate Budget Committee, and he's vice chair of that committee, so he can be a good one for Laurelites to reach directly out to on that. Lastly, you know, a couple, I wanted to also share on the small business front about the Laurel Board of the Trade's new ribbon cutting on March fourteenth as well, as did Councilwoman Johnson, so come on out and be able to celebrate their new location. And that concludes my report for tonight, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons, Councilmember Mills, are you ready to do your report?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
So on the February twenty-seventh, I had the pleasure to attend the Lars movie as well. It was very great, I mean, it was heartfelt, you know, really. It was a, you know, if you haven't seen the movie, No Address, please support that movie. And it's a, it's a, you gotta bring some tissue when you go see that movie. Yeah, man, enough to say that. And let me see, and then the very next day, actually, after that, after that meeting, after that, after that movie, there was a graduation that was held at the Multi-Service Center, the Getting Ahead graduation ceremony, and that was at six P M. at the Multi-Service Center. And there were four men and one, one young lady, and she she actually missed it because she was having, she was having her son, so congratulations to her as well. But these are, the Getting Ahead program ceremony was about and is about those who are have a situation of having no address. And so they graduated and they'll be moving on, and so I wish them much success in life. The, and that's Saturday, Saturday, March first, that was the federal employee summit at the Greenbelt Middle School that Congressman Glenn Ivy and his wife, Councilwoman Chair Jolene Ivy was giving. And that was a packed house, that was very good, and that was a success as well. And I'm looking to try to have an event like that, like a job fair that we're going to be working on. And actually, I do have the date that we'll be hosting the job fair here in Laurel on June the seventh, and it's going to be in conjunction with the Maryland Department of Labor right at the Multi-Service Center. And that next, that next Saturday, June the fourteenth, I'm looking to, and this is a, this is a shout out to you, Adrian Simmons, Council, Councilman Simmons. Here it is, right here, we're looking for one hundred Fathers' Day. So I need you, all right? All right, and Mayor, I need you too, because I'm, 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 I'm putting, yeah, yeah, I'm putting all y'all on blast. I need, Mayor, I need you to give your history lesson, all right? So I'm just putting y'all on notice right now, so clear your calendars. June fourteenth, ten A M. to twelve noon, all right? And Madam President, that is going to conclude my, 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 my report, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. For my report, since our February twenty-fourth meeting, I attended the Education Advisory Committee meeting on February twenty-sixth. Also had the pleasure of attending the Lars No Address movie premiere on February twenty-seventh with my fellow councilmembers, I would like to thank in advance Lars. It actually came right in time, because I actually worked yesterday with Atlanta, Georgia, the city of Atlanta, Georgia, because a similar incident actually happened in Atlanta. And so one of the local businesses there collected a lot of tents where someone was slashing the unhoused tents there and their residences, and so community members and businesses came together in the downtown area and gathered a lot of items for them, so I, oddly enough, they didn't even know about the movie. So I told them about the movie because they had no idea that they were doing something very similar. So thank you again to Lars. Also, each Monday, I am a member of the Legislative Committee for the Prince George's County Municipal Association, and we meet on the legislation that will be coming out so that we are on top of things and to keep each other informed. And so we also had a meeting this morning. Also attended Ms. Charlene Taylor's funeral services on March fourth at the Selborn House. My condolences again, attended along with Mayor Keith Sidnor for those services. March third through the fifth, as I did last year as well, advocating on Capitol Hill for bleeding disorders in our community, and I'm not sure if you're aware, but it is Bleeding Disorders Awareness Month, and this month aims to increase awareness about bleeding disorders such as hemophilia, Von Willebrand disease, and other related conditions. And there are organizations that I work with on a regular basis to help mitigate and get assistance, education, and advocacy for individuals with bleeding disorders. So if you don't know about it, please look it up, because I'm sure someone that you know or someone in your family may also have a bleeding disorder. I also attended Councilmember Tom Dernogas' community conversation with U S Senator Chris Van Hollen and Laurel community members. In addition to that, attended a federal worker information held by counts, I'm sorry, by county council chair, Jolene Ivy and Congressman Glenn Ivy. And it was extremely informational, there were hundreds of people that attended. My fellow councilmembers also attended, Mayor Sidnor, I saw Councilmember Mills, I may have missed some additional individuals, but it was very good to see the community coming together, to see elected officials coming together to find resources, to be there and just say, hey, we are a part of your city, if you need something, here's our card, you can call us at any time. So thank you again to Congressman Glenn Ivy and to county council chair Jolene Ivy for holding that for our residents and community members. In addition to that, as Councilmember Simmons said, it was a joy to see, and thank you, Mayor Sidnor, for informing us, I believe you were at the Maryland General Assembly about Eric's Law passing. I had an opportunity, Eric's mom called me immediately after and let me know. They did tell me that it's going, the next step is they're going to look to get it passed with the Senate and the congressional members, she did ask me for advice on next step, so I did help her with that that day to get her connected to some people on Capitol Hill so that they can start working on that as well. So if you have any ability to support that, please do. And I believe that is it for my report. Thank you, Mayor Sidnor, please feel free to proceed.
Thank you, Council President Clark, good evening, everyone, I just want to start out with some good news, congratulate one of our own, our city administrator, Kristen Pully, she's one of the top one hundred women in the state of Maryland, so give her a hand. Also, talking about Eric's Law, I want to, Council Clerk Sarah Green shared a lot of personal information in a letter that the council and the mayor wrote, but it's Council Clerk Green, like I said, shared a lot of personal information in there about her mother suffering autism. And so we appreciate that, I asked her to take some stuff out, but she said no, she wanted to leave it in there, and so just thinking for that, and Eric's Law has passed, you know, so we support that one percent, sent that letter to our state delegation. And so, yeah, they came down here as well, so that's a great thing. Onto my report, on February the nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, of course, I attended a movie, The Six Trip Eight, in our Greenville Cinema Theater. And on February the twentieth, we meet quarterly with the principals, all the local principals here, they come here and tell us some ideas for going in their school, how can the city assist them in their nature, and it's a good meeting we have with them on the twentieth, we had that meeting, so the next one will be next quarter. On February the twenty-second, the Black History Program, Councilmember Johnson and her colleague Jade Media represented it. Myself was on a panel along with Mayor Greenbelt Emmett Jordan, and I've got those two people's names, why you don't be saying people's names, but it was an excellent panel. Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson, for putting that together as well. February twenty-third, myself, Chief Hammer, and Deputy Chief Polinsky, we attended Black History Program, St. Mark's Church. They love Chief in the community, so I guess we can't get rid of him. The pastor, Smith, was saying, all the great work Chief Hammer does in the community, and Chief told me, like, see, Mayor, you can't get rid of me, though, but I believe he probably does great work attending church there, it was great. So they get a lot of, a lot of positive feedback from St. Mark's Church and that congregation, so thank you, Chief and Deputy Chief, for attending that program as well. February twenty-fifth, I attended the Black History Program as a guest speaker at Fort Meade Middle School that's outside our district, but Chairman of the June tenth Committee, she's a school teacher there, and she invited me there to speak to the children, and you know, I love talking to the kids, and they was excited, and yeah, they wanted me to come back, but you know, I gotta stay in Prince George's County, now I'll go back. So February twenty-sixth, I had Laurel Elementary School Read-In, Black History Program there as well, I attended that, read to the kids, we read a book to them. March the fourth, like we mentioned earlier, Congressman Ivory and Chair Ivory had a resource fair for our district here, Congressional District Four, at Greenbelt Middle School, it was well attended, I think they say over eight hundred people registered for the event there. On May the fourth, excuse me, March the fourth, I attended a meeting, the Males Against Childhood Hunger. We actually wrote a letter to Congress from night to end to keep SNAP programs, SNAP programs, Supplemental Nutrition Program for kids and families, and the WIC is for women, infants, children. So we urged Congress, the President, not to cut funds for those programs, those programs is needed in our community throughout the state and throughout America. So we wrote a letter to Congress, a bipartisan mayor group, is in that meeting. March, like Councilman President Clark said, Charlene Taylor, we attended a funeral at the Selborn House. March the fifth, the Maryland Municipal Government's Associated Winter Conference Meeting on the fifth, it was from the fifth to the sixth, I'm to the eighth, excuse me, to the sixth. Governor Westmore invited us up to his house, and he had us a briefing and let us know what was going on. They said they had three billion dollars, three billion dollars deficit, but there's a budget coming up, so they're trying to find ways to make up the difference. That's a lot of money, so they're gonna continue to work on that. So I told you, March the fifth to the sixth, fourth to the sixth, was the Maryland Association Winter Conference. March the eighth, Women History Month Program, Councilwoman Johnson, thank you for doing that, we got a proclamation, I'll talk about that later. March the tenth, of course, through the day, through the twelfth, is National League of Cities. So we, I guess, Speaker of the Day was Vice President Vance, and also Governor Westmore was also on a panel there as well, so National League Congressional Cities, I guess, councilmembers, I never attended when I was a councilmember because I was working, but if you get a chance to go there, you gotta take leave, of course, on your day job, but it's a great opportunity to go there, you get to go on the hill, advocate, meet the congressmen and the senators for your district, and talk about some things that's gonna affect us federally. And so on Wednesday, we're going to the hill, I wouldn't be going on Wednesday, I'll just be going on Monday and Tuesday, so I'm not going to the hill on Wednesday. But that's all, once again, it's elected officials and city employees, officials from all the United States come there to Washington, too, and then they just train us on how to talk to your congressman, your senator, and advocate for federal legislation. And it was a really intense meeting, the day when Vice President Vance was there. They were telling us to be very respectful, but it got out of hand a little bit, folks was strong about their feelings, we're not a partisan, but of course, I maintain my decorum, but folks was, it was an intense meeting with Vice President Vance there. But so I guess that's how politics goes sometimes, but but then we were going to here, advocate to your elected officials, I think we did great here with our elected officials in District Four and our United States Senators, so we have a pulse with them on like that, so we'll continue to build. So I got a couple announcements to make, if I can, Madam President, can I make them now?
Yes, thank you.
Laurel High School is in the semifinals for the basketball four-year region. They play Meade High School on Wednesday, they're gonna be playing at Wise High School at six P M. So if you're available to go out there, support Laurel High School versus Meade High School. On March the sixth, excuse me, on March, what day I said it? Wednesday, March, Wednesday, it was twelve, twelve, so at six P M. at Wise High School. We announced the Board of Trade Open House already. Federal Employee Job Fair on March the twelfth, Wednesday, at the Hotel, the University of Maryland. Once again, that's the Prince George County, working with an employer, Prince George, do a federal career transition resource fair, something similar to what they did at Greenbelt Middle School, I guess it's gonna be a bigger event, and actually more employers there, it's gonna be at the hotel at the University of Maryland on March the twelfth. The time is from ten A M. to twelve P M. So seven-seven-seven Baltimore Avenue, March the twelfth, University of Maryland Hotel, Hotel. Some proclamations, I want to, I'm not gonna read the whole proclamation, but Councilman President Clark, you mentioned something about Bleeding Disorder Month. We can give you a proclamation for that, that you can take it to the organization you work with, we'll work on that for you as well. But this is March, it's also American Red Cross Month, so I encourage you, you know, like Councilman Clark said, folks suffering bleeding disorders, folks need blood as well, so American Red Cross Month, this month is where I encourage you to register, donate blood if you can. Good sportsmanship, proclamation for this month in March as well, so we always want to have good sportsmanship, whether you win or lose, you want to show good sportsmanship, show some decorum, be respectful towards one another. And Women History Month proclamation, I should have presented this to Councilman Johnson there at the meeting on Saturday, but I didn't get a chance to do it, so I just want to read from number two right fast. By May, I lost my train of thought, disregard that, so Women History Month, that concludes my report, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor Sidnor, would you like to also continue to share your mayoral appointment?
Can you tell me who I didn't?
Yeah, sure, no problem, Eileen Stokes, Board of Trustees, three-ten-twenty-twenty-five to three-ten-twenty-twenty-nine.
Yes, as Councilman President said, Ms. Eileen Stokes as the Board of Trustees, I recommend confirmation from the council to point her to that position, please.
Thank you, Mayor Sidnor, are there any questions? If I may have a motion to approve the mayoral appointment mentioned?
I'll make a motion to approve Ms. Eileen Stokes for the Board of Trustees.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson, Madam Clerk, we have a motion, do I have a second?
Seconding.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mayor Sidnor, did you want to say anything?
Now, thank you, Council, for the confirmation, Ms. Stokes would be an exceptional person, her background is in business administration, so she is looking forward to working with the Board of Trustees, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sidnor. Before I proceed to agenda item number six, I just wanted to say I was amiss to say that it is Women's History Month, and thank you, Councilwoman Johnson, for really bringing the event on Saturday, it was such a joy to see all of the wonderful speakers that you had and just the camaraderie that everyone had in the community, it was really nice, so thank you and well done. Moving to agenda item number six, we have our general public hearing. This is a time to hear from you, our community, your voice matters and we value your input. We encourage you to share your thoughts, concerns, and ideas with us as they are essential to shaping our work and our city's future. To confirm, Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed up today to speak?
Yes, Madam President, we have Mr. Pruden from Congressman Ivory's office, I'm gonna allow him to speak.
Thank you. Mr. Pruden, this is Congressman Glenn Ivory's office, please proceed and welcome to our meeting.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Madam President, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, before I proceed, I want to thank you for attending the Resource Fair at Greenbelt Middle School. It was very pleasing to have members of municipality there, and Laurel was well represented. We think the Resource Fair was a great success, but it's nice to hear that you you thought it was worth attending also. There will be more, and when we have the dates ready to announce, we'll make sure that you get the announcement. My name is Joseph Pruden. Uh, my name is Joseph Pruden, and I am the Veterans and Military Affairs Liaison with the Office of Congressman Ivy. Uh, thank you very much for having me this evening. To say these are unprecedented times is an understatement. Like many of you, Congressman Ivy is deeply concerned by the rash of unchecked executive actions taken by President Trump and his unelected billionaire bureaucrat buddy Elon Musk. Their extreme actions have gutted diversity programs, threatened thousands of federal jobs, stopped critical foreign aid that helps keep our country safe, and frozen federal dollars for critical and life-saving programs. All in a matter of weeks. These arbitrary decisions of the Trump administration have no clear goals, do not bring down the cost for the American people, and threaten to invade our other nations, including our allies. This does not keep people safe, and the firing of civil servants does not make our government run more efficiently. The American people elected a government to help make their lives better. As such, Congressman Ivy supports efforts to make the government more efficient, lower the cost of food and medicine, implement sensible immigration reform, and keep the public safe from threats at home and abroad, and his House Democratic colleagues are supporting similar efforts. Instead of addressing the real and complicated issues of working Americans, Trump and his unelected sidekick Elon Musk are focused on the needs of billionaires and lining their own pockets. So how can we fight back? By leaning on the two additional co-equal branches of our federal government. Congressman Ivy supports efforts by unions representing federal employees to push back in the courts against illegal, arbitrary, and discriminatory firings. Many federal employees have civil service protections or collectively bargain for, for rights that protect them from these removals based on political retaliation. Our courts must step in to ensure these rights are not trampled upon. Additionally, Congress must stand up to tyranny. While Congressman Ivy's Republican colleagues appear to have developed amnesia on the role of Congress, he would like to remind them that the founders made Congress the Article One branch of our federal government for a reason. Congress makes the laws and Congress appropriates federal dollars. Congress is an equal partner with the White House in governing our nation, not a junior partner. Many actions taken by Trump are illegal and unconstitutional. We must not be afraid to exert our powers to protect working people and their families from a president acting outside his authority. Please know you have a fighter in Congressman Ivy as we press forward through these difficult times. He will not stand idly by, I'm sorry, not stand idly by Trump and Musk, whichever of them is really in charge, destroy our federal government and the work of generations of Americans to make our nation a more perfect union. If you or someone you know has been affected by the policies put into place by the Trump administration, please have them visit our website, ivy.house.gov to find resources for federal workers, immigrant families, and the L G B T Q I A plus community. This resource page is located under Services, Services, and then Resources for Maryland is affected by Trump administration policies. If you're unable to find the information you need, please call the office and our staff will be happy to assist you. I will send the web address and the phone numbers to the mayor, the president, and the council, so they will have them available and I hope you'll put them on your website. Additionally, Congressman Ivy would like to remind you that our office congressional nominations to the Military Service Academies, uh, Military Service Academies. Congressmen may nominate candidates to the four of the five service academies. Nominations go to the U S Military Academy at West Point, the U S Naval Academy in Annapolis, the Air Force Academy in Colorado Springs, and the U S Merchant Marine Academy at Kings Point, New York. The Fifth Service Academy, the U S Coast Guard Academy, does not require congressional nominees for appointment to the academy. Please understand that receiving a congressional nomination does not guarantee admission to an academy. However, it is a requirement to be considered for appointment as part of each service academy's admission process, with the exception of the United States Coast Guard Academy. Congressman Ivy is a constituent-oriented congressman, and he would love to have nominations to fill all the vacancies he has from Maryland's Fourth District. If you know of a high school student who might be interested in going to a military academy, please have them apply, whether they think they're qualified or not. We will be willing to help get them through the process so that we can get Maryland's Fourth District represented in all of these academies. For information about the service academies and for a brief first step, you can also go to the congressman's website and click on Service Academies for the beginning of the process. It's very easy, it's, and it's painless.
Thank you, Mr. Pruden. We appreciate you attending our meeting this evening, and please, we look forward to, if you could send that information, um, and then we can provide that to our communications department as well. It would be greatly appreciated. Mayor Sidnor, I'm sorry, go.
I was just gonna say absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Sidnor. I see that, um, your hand is raised as well.
Yes, while we got, uh, Mr. Pruden is here, um, any council members, any federal legislation, the federal things that you want, request. I know that we, uh, Councilman co-sponsored, we sponsored a resolution to, uh, the bond exemption, make sure that, that we keep that. So, uh, Mr. Pruden, I know Congressman Ivory, we see, we send letters there, we're gonna send more letters as well. So that's something that we wanna make sure. Uh, I know our chief police, I was about to text our chief police, it's something that he's requesting from the federal government. I'll put him on the spot. But Chief, if you want to speak to the Congressman Ivy's office, let them know how important that law is to us and how we need it, that federal funding?
So we've requested federal funding for a, um, crime lab addition to our, uh, rear of our station. Uh, and I believe it's before Congressman Ivy at this time, so your kind consideration would be much appreciated. It would really help with us, uh, complete our mission of, uh, solving crimes that adversely affect our entire community, um, and, um, my opinion, we're not, really not asking for a whole lot there. When you see it, you'll see it's a very reasonable ask, so thank you.
You're quite welcome. I don't know where it is in the process, but I will mention it to the congressman tomorrow, and in the interim, I will get back to you and let you know what's happening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And once again, Mr. Pruden, we're requesting that, Congressman, like I said, we send letters as well, city, uh, we support a resolution along the National League of Cities to preserve the tax exemption for municipal bonds. So we appreciate the congressman, um, you know, keeping that for us as well. And also, like I said in my report, I don't know if you're listening, a hundred and eighteen males, um, throughout, um, Maryland, for SNAP, protect the SNAP benefits for, you know, and WIC benefits. So we sent a letter to Congress there because we was here, that there's supposed to be some cuts in those benefits. So we wanna make sure that folks are allowed to keep their SNAP benefits and their WIC benefits as well. And also Medicaid, Medicare, we know that, it's, there's been talk about that. So we urge the congressman to fight for us on that because Medicaid, Medicare is very important to our community as well. So, uh, those are some things that I have. Any council members, any things that you want to, uh, that's federal legislation that the congressman can fight for. So like I said, we as a city already wrote letters to Congressman Ivory's office, and me as the, uh, Males Against Our Childhood Hunger wrote letters as well, and Chief wrote some as well. Anything that you think of that you see that's a need in the community, we got, uh, Congressman Ivory's liaison office here now. We can, um, speak on that right now if you can.
Um, Mayor Sidnor, would you, it might, just to give each council member opportunity to think, we could possibly gather it, send it to Madam Clerk, and then we can communicate that to Mr. Pruden and the Congressman Ivy's office? I think that'll help everybody just to get their thoughts.
Up in the, you had right offhand that you want, well, we got him on, right on the line. Sometimes it's, we got him here and get him. We definitely, um, send on behalf of the city, I just thought maybe some things that you might do with the community that you'd be hearing, that you might wanna bring it up. So, yeah, definitely agree with you, Councilman Clark, but, thank you so much.
Madam President, the, uh, clerk and the administrator have my email address and phone number. Um, I do know, Mr. Mayor, that the congressman is fighting to keep the, uh, Social Security, the SNAP benefits, and Medicaid benefits as far as the federal position is concerned. He, uh, as you might understand at the moment, uh, a lot of these are an uphill battle. But Mr. Ivy is used to working uphill, so he is doing all he can to keep these benefits at least where they are with, without being reduced. Um, I will make sure that anything that comes up, uh, that changes that, I will let you know so that you're not kept in the dark. But, uh, he also sends out a newsletter to keep people up to date.
Thank you.
And if you, if you wanna send me by email or phone number or phone call, I'll be happy to follow up on those also.
Now, we're, we're saying, that was gonna be my request when we go to the Hill, but I'm not gonna go into, I'm not going to the Hill, so I have you right here. Talking about generally, so, but the City of Laurel already sent some stuff in, but.
I hear you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pruden. Thank you, Mayor Sidnor. Um, in addition, just for noting purposes and our records, we, we did open the general public hearing at six twenty-seven P M. Um, seeing that there are no additional speakers, in addition to Mr. Pruden, I will now close the general public hearing at six thirty-nine P M. Moving to Agenda Item Number Seven, we have the Fleet Acquisition Two Zero Two Five Ford E Three Fifty Service Body by the Department of Public Works. We have Acting Director of D P W, Mr. Tommy Helms. Please proceed.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor Sidnor, President Clark, and Laurel City Council members. The Department of Public Works is requesting approval for the purchase of a two thousand twenty-five Ford E Three Fifty Service Body for the Department of Parks and Recreation. This department solicited several quotes, including from vendors on state and county contracts. The accepted quote is from the Baltimore County Contract zero, 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 four, five, zero, four, with Apple Ford of Columbia, Maryland. The quotes were as follows. Apple Ford of Columbia, sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. Upper Marlboro Ford, sixty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. And Bob Bell Ford of Glen Burnie, sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars. Funding for this equipment is provided in the F Y twenty-five adopted C I P Fleet Replacement Program. The cost for this vehicle is sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars, and with, and this new additional increase are fleet. It's recommended that the purchase of this vehicle uh, for a total cost of sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars from Apple Ford of Columbia. Thank you.
Thank you. Acting Director Tommy Helms, does, do any of the council members have any questions or comments? Councilmember Simmons, please proceed.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to share with, with residents to, from our work session that we, uh, learned that savings from the prior fiscal year are being used to, to fund the, the truck purchase. I know that was, uh, helpful for me to hear that piece of information and that this truck's also being used for a new, um, building maintenance role for the person to be able to move between the city buildings. So I thought that was helpful information. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. Do we have any additional questions or comments from the council? No? Okay. Um, just to confirm, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this agenda item?
No, Madam President.
Thank you. Uh, seeing that there are no speakers, I will open the pub, the public hearing at six forty-one P M. and close the public hearing at six forty-one P M. This item will, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
Uh, President Clark, we don't, uh, do the, uh, public hearing for bid recommendations.
Oh, yes, thank you.
That's okay, and you can, uh, you can call for, uh, a motion and a vote on this one tonight, just the ordinances and resolutions.
I appreciate it. I was like, let's be safe and not sorry.
Yeah.
All right, perfect. Thank you, uh, Madam Clerk. Do I have a motion, since there are no questions or comments, to approve this bid recommendation? For the Fleet Acquisition Two Zero Two Five Ford E Three Fifty Service Body, as described?
Uh, Madam President, I move to accept the bid recommendation for the acquisition of the Ford E Three Fifty.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
My second.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I have a motion and a second. Can you please call the roll?
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And moving to Agenda Item Number Eight. We have a bid recommendation for Automated Speed Enforcement Camera Program contract. The City of Laurel Police Department, um, is requesting for speed enforcement within the City of Laurel, um, and to sign an agreement. Chief Hamel, would you like to share additional information about this agenda item?
Thank you very much, Council President Clark and Mayor Sidnor and our city council members. So the Laurel Police Department is respectfully requesting permission to sign an agreement regarding Automated Enforcement Camera Program services for speed enforcement within the City of Laurel. We're requesting to bridge on the agreement between our current vendor, Altiment, and Calvert County, Maryland, as permissible under city policy. The agreement has been extensively reviewed by the city solicitor, Department of Police Personnel, as well as the Department of Budget and Personal Services. It is believed to be the best option for our speed enforcement program at this time. The contract between the parties effectively addresses our program needs and allows for a seamless continuation and expansion of the current program, which we have been pleased with since the current vendor purchased our original vendor and assumed responsibility for the program. The Laurel Automated Enforcement Program Regarding Speed Enforcement is respectfully requesting to bridge the current Calvert County Contract for Speed Enforcement Services. The contract includes a flat fee per site for the maintenance of the equipment and issuing and mailing of the citations, with an additional cost for any, uh, citations over twenty-five hundred for the entire program each month. The costs associated with the program are paid for the proceeds of the paid citations issued prior to distribution of the remainder to the city. It is respectfully recommended that the mayor and city council approve the continuation of the Automated Speed Enforcement Program with Altiment expanding it with the, uh, Calvert County Contract for the provisions provided within the agreement. Thank you all for your time this evening and last week on this, and I'm available for any questions, as is Mark. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Hamel. Uh, are there any questions or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the request from, uh, the City of Laurel Police Department?
Make a motion to approve the bid recommendation for the Automated Speed Enforcement Camera Contract.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. As a motion, do I have a second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all. Have a very good night.
Thank you. You as well, Chief Hamel. Moving to Agenda Item Number Nine. Uh, we have Introduction and First Public Hearing on Ordnance Number Two Zero Three Nine, an ordinance amending the General Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July one, two thousand twenty-four, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, and to provide an effective date. Uh, Director Michelle Saylor, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Mayor Sidnor, uh, council members, as we discussed at the work session last week, ordinance twenty thirty-five, thirty-nine, excuse me, twenty thirty-nine, um, is the fifth, um, amendment to our F Y twenty twenty-five operating budget and C I P. Um, in this ordinance, um, we're taking, uh, the time to incorporate the new department names from Charter Resolution Number One Eighty to include, uh, Human Services for, um, the addition to the department name of the Craig A. Mo Laurel Multi-Service Center, as well as Laurel Helping Hands. Um, those will be under Human Services, and then the Department of Emergency Management. Again, there is no transfer of funds. All three of these, um, for me, departments, they were always departments, uh, at the department level. They had funding. We're not moving any funding. We're not changing anything. I'm just incorporating the name, the department name changes into the budget, um, name changes into the budget, um, and when the charter resolution becomes effective on March eighteenth, um, that will allow us to move forward with those new department names in the FY twenty twenty-six budget. Additionally, in this ordinance, we're transferring seventy-five hundred dollars from employee training to employee tuition, um, we've had some savings, thankfully, in training, um, so there were a couple requests that I had missed during the preparation of the FY twenty-five budget, so, um, that will allow us to put the, that funding into tuition for some college classes that had been requested. On page three of the ord, or I'm sorry, page four of the ordinance, page ten of your packet, you'll see some changes to the CIP. We're adding funds to Morton Place, Stanley Place, Eighth Street, Little Montgomery Street, uh, sidewalks and curb and gutters, and the Council Chambers Project, um, and these funds, with the exception of the Council Chambers microphones, which come from the Public Equipment Grant or PEG money, which comes from the cable subscribers, um, the other funding is coming from closed-out streets of Carroll Avenue, Park Avenue, and Cambridge Circle, so it's really just a net change of fifteen thousand dollars to the CIP, again, because that PEG funding is new to the CIP, um, and the others just, uh, work themselves out, cancel each other out as far as the additions and the, and the project closeouts. And that's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Director Saylor. Are there any questions or comments from the council in regards to ordinance number two zero three nine? Seeing none, um, we also thank you for answering a lot of those questions during our work session, Director Saylor, it was very helpful in understanding exactly how things are being moved and for what purpose, so thank you for that.
Absolutely.
All right, seeing that there are no, there are no questions or comments from the council, um, to confirm, Madam Clerk, are there any speakers signed up for the public hearing portion of this ordinance?
No, Madam President, we don't have anyone signed up.
Thank you. Um, so seeing that there are no speakers signed up, I will now open the public hearing portion at six fifty PM and close the public hearing portion at six fifty PM. If no council members have any objections to moving this, uh, to the second public hearing, with possible action on this item for our next meeting, we will now move to Agenda Item Number Two. For Agenda I, and thank you, Director Saylor. For Agenda Item Number Ten, we have the Introduction and First Public Hearing on Ordinance Number Two Zero Four Zero, an ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland, amending Laurel City Code, Chapter Sixteen, Taxation, Article One, Section Sixteen dash ten, Elderly and Veteran Tax Credit Program, and providing an effective date. Councilmember Adrian Simmons, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and this, uh, resolution is to, or ordinance is to, uh, update the city's property tax credit available to, uh, elderly and veterans, um, essentially, if, if folks aren't aware, if over, uh, essentially for over age sixty-five, or if you are meeting the criteria as a veteran, including surviving spouses, you know, you are eligible for a twenty percent, uh, property tax credit on, uh, five hundred thousand dollars of assessed value. You need to have lived in the residence as well for ten years or more, as one of the other criteria of this credit. Um, when originally written by the city, uh, we had to limit it to a length of time of no more than five years, because Maryland enabling legislation constrained us to that five-year window, but subsequent to when we first adopted this tax credit, Maryland lifted that limitation, and so this ordinance is to also lift that five-year limitation, um, at the city-level tax credit. Um, you'll also see there's a little bit of language around clarifying how the calculation works, basically it's, you know, twenty percent times that first five hundred thousand dollars of assessed value, so I'm pleased to be able to present this for our residents in our community and open to any questions that there may be.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. Are there any questions or comments from the council regarding ordinance number two zero four zero? I don't see any additional questions. Um, with no questions, just to confirm, we do not have any speakers signed up for this open public hearing for ordinance number two zero four zero, Madam Clerk?
That's right, Madam President, we don't have anyone signed up.
Thank you. Uh, seeing that no one has signed up for the open public hearing portion, I will open public hearing at six fifty-three PM and close the public hearing at six fifty-three PM. Thank you, Councilmember Simmons, for further explaining this ordinance, um, with, with this item will be moved to the second public hearing with possible action on this item for our in-person March twenty-fourth meeting at six PM in Council Chambers. Uh, that is our last agenda item. Thank you, everyone, for your time tonight, and with no further business to come before the mayor and city council, this meeting is adjourned at six fifty-three PM.